Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I commit some motion for the amended?
President, I would move that we approve the agenda with the following amendments. First, additional classified and classified personnel actions for consideration, item E3. Remove item E4B, classified personnel handbook, and remove item E4E, administrator personnel handbook. There was a fourth amendment to that, but I'm not asking that be put on at this point.
Do we have any discussion? Oh, need a second, sorry.
One sec.
Okay, any discussion? All in paper, may I?
Aye.
All opposed? We'll move on to delegations, question, answer, and fellow comment today. And we get to move on to our fun part, recognitions. We are looking to recognize the theater students and family, career, and community leaders from there. Dr. Singh, thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, board. It is my honor once again to come before the board to celebrate my successful students and staff. Tonight, as was mentioned, we are honoring our FCCLA participation in national competition and the results, and also our award-winning theater program, who also went to a national competition presentation. And I'm gonna let it be taken over by the adults in charge. We have Ms. Barb Hilt, Ms. Robin Hilt, who's a member of both the theater department and FCCLA. We have Alice Hilt, and we have Chef Maldonado, Chef Elizabeth Maldonado. So I'm gonna let them take over, and thank you.
So I have a number of students with me who attended the International Thespian Festival. If you guys want to come up here, and I'll let you introduce yourselves. We were fortunate enough to be selected as one of 11 schools to present Hamlet at the International Thespian Festival in Nebraska, at the University of Lincoln, Nebraska. And we had to perform our show twice on the main stage, which is a huge honor. As far as I know, but I don't know all of the history of Garden City drama, it would be the first time, I think, that that's maybe ever occurred. Although I did meet an alumnus from Garden City Drama Department who is now working for, is it OSU or OU?
OU.
OU. She talked to some of our students about possibly recruiting them, and they have a great theater program there. And talked really fondly about her time here in Garden City and was really excited to see us there. So, yeah, so we had to perform twice. Not only did we have other thespians, students in the audience watching, but also their theater teachers. And also Dr. Singh came and saw our performance. And we also had a New York theater critic that was in the audience, who wrote an article about us. And we posted on our Facebook for Garden City High School Drama, if you're interested in reading that. He only mentioned our one actor by name. He didn't mention any of the other show actors by name, and gave him like a glowing performance review for Nathan Iall, who played Hamlet. So I'm gonna let them introduce themselves. This is our trophy that we were presented with for having a show on the national stage. And like I said, it was a great honor. We got to see other performances. I had five students who either interviewed for scholarships with colleges from all over the country or auditioned, and they did very well as well, so, name.
Job Silva.
Hi. I'm Jairus Lobmeier.
What year are you guys?
Senior. Junior.
This is what they're going to be. Yeah, they're looking to the future, that's good.
Jessica Angulo, and I am a junior.
Amelia Baca, I'll be a sophomore.
I'm Kyler Bennett, I'll be a junior.
I'm Nathan Iall, and I'll be a senior.
I'm Katie Chandler, and I just graduated.
I'm Nancy Tran, I just graduated.
I'm Lorenzo Tamarano, and I also just graduated.
I'm Colby Blackburn, and I'm gonna be a sophomore.
I'm Delaney De Spain, and I just graduated.
I'm Also, I'm staff, and I help with set.
I'm Robin Hilt, and I do costumes. And I haven't said it before, but I've been there before, so maybe you remember. What's that?
What roles did they play?
Oh, you wanna say what role you played?
Yeah, I was King Claudius.
Oliver.
Just the main one.
Rosencrantz.
Some of them played multiple roles.
Queen Gertrude.
I did the soundboard.
Layer tease.
I was Hamlet.
I'm a dresser, and I do the videos.
I was the light board operator in videos.
I played Philonius.
I played Horatio.
Cornelius.
And actually, Colby, who is a transfer freshman this year, stepped into the role and took over after one rehearsal with us because we had an injury, and we needed a new Horatio. So he learned it really quickly. Not only did they have a performance, but they also had to load in their entire set, build the set in three hours, focus and hang all of the lights, focus and hang any of the hanging hardware onstage. So it's a great learning opportunity for them. And then we have to load out before 11 o'clock, so after doing two shows, yeah. So it's a strenuous day, but they did an amazing job, and I think everyone had a fantastic time. And we just wanna thank you for supporting us and helping us to be able to attend festivals like this. Not everyone has that opportunity, and we're so, so grateful that we get to go and represent Garden City High School on an international stage.
Well, thank you for representing us. Does anybody have any questions for this student?
How many scholarship offers were made?
Well, they don't really necessarily offer scholarships right then and there, but they have callbacks. Too many to count, but five students who participated in that. I don't even know, tech student-wise, how many they... They, yeah, Nate on his own had like 31. So, and to really prestigious schools, so, yeah. So hopefully, they're on their way to getting scholarship money this next year. You can only go and do that as a junior, because obviously, by the time you're a senior in the summer, it's a little too late. At our Kansas State Festival, they can audition for scholarships there if they're a junior, senior this year. Because that'll be in January.
So what's one standout thing about theater where you, like, if you're trying to recruit other students, what's the standout thing about theater for students at GCHS?
I think one of the biggest standouts that I see in a lot of my peers and a lot of people who also participate in theater is like that ambition and like the want to create stories and to entertain people and to just make people happy. And I think it's just a cool thing to see, especially in such young people that like drive to be able to like make a set and to be able to go through this whole process to create something beautiful that we can present to everybody. So I think a lot of ambition, it's like a really key factor to theater.
That's a really good answer. And I think one of the major takeaways for all of you in this production is not only were we presenting on a national stage, but we were presenting Shakespeare, which doesn't happen that often. But our production, we really focused on highlighting the art and what is our artistry. And so like Kyler played cello, not only acted in the show, but played cello. Him and Nathan had to learn stage combat, sword fighting. And then Nate also played guitar. So there's a lot of things that go in, and Jared's on the wrestling team, and so we integrated that into the show as well. He's not here tonight, but he played Guildenstern. And Nate and Jared wrestled onstage in the middle of the show. So wherever they are, we try to integrate what they're using in other areas as well. Also, hopefully, this supplements, you know, their English classes. One of the things that we really strive for, because when we got here seven years ago, we had numerous students who would mention Shakespeare, and I hate Shakespeare, you know? So one of our sort of ambitions was, how do we get students to not hate Shakespeare anymore? Well, let's have them do it. Let's have them perform it, because seeing a live sword fight is a lot different than talking about it in class, and then the understanding of the show is heightened. And we did, when we, back in September, when we did the show originally, we did the show for our seniors. And we also invited community schools in for free to see it, so that we could help supplement what English teachers are trying to accomplish in their classes.
Well, I'd like to thank you all, ladies, thank you for your leadership in this area. It just seems like this program is just like has taken on, it's just so amazing. And I'd also like to thank you students. I have been able to see some of your work, and I thank you for the hard work and for your willingness to entertain us and bring beauty and just art to our community. I think that's just really, really important. So thank you for your willingness to do that. I know it's a lot of work. I've seen you, even your fundraising, I mean, just all of it. So it's not just sets and acting, it's you guys really do a lot, so thank you. And we'd like to shake your hand, so congratulations.
Hello again, I'm Robin Hilt, and I am the fashion and interior design teacher at Garden City High School. And I am Elizabeth Maldonado, and I am the culinary arts teacher at the Garden City High School. And these are wonderful students that came in out of the nine with busy life schedules and stuff. They weren't able to make it, but these are three of the nine, and I'll let them introduce themselves.
I'm Audrey Norekles. Me and Emily paired up for our R of it in our nationals, which was food innovations. We received gold and first place in the nation.
I'm Emily Chandler. I'm going to be a sophomore, and I'm also an FCCLA district vice president. And then back in, I placed first with our nationals. And then back at Cluster in November, I also placed first in impromptu speaking.
I'm Katie Chandler, and like I said earlier, I just graduated. I did leadership, and I got second in the nation. And I just finished my term as the Kansas State Vice President of Public Relations. And then back in November, I competed at Cluster with the rest of my team, and I got first place in impromptu speaking, the occupational category.
We also have students who aren't here today, Jason Tran, who's off at college. And he placed first in the nation in Applied Mathematics for Culinary Management. And he won a full ride scholarship to Sullivan University. And then we also have Caitlin Harmon, who participated in Teach and Train.
Advocacy.
Advocacy, sorry, about life skill classes, and she placed fifth in the nation. And then our culinary team did very well, and they ended up with a bronze medal. They did really good. Those three that competed in the culinary arts was Daniel Gonzalez, Lydia Martinez, and Victoria Ramirez. Victoria is a CEO, she just graduated, and Lydia, she's a sophomore, went into a junior. And she's really wanna do this again next year. She got really excited. It's her first national win to go to make it to nationals, so they got her really pumped up to do it again next year. And then the other same thing, too. He's a junior, gonna be a senior, or he is a senior now, I guess, since we're gonna start school here very soon. And then Ryan Blaze, he did food innovations as well, and he placed a silver. He did, they did amazing. I mean, there was a lot of students that competed. And Caitlin Harmon placed fifth in the nation. And Jason Tran, again, he placed first in the nation for culinary applied math, which was amazing. I mean, they gave him a big recognition. They had a, they seeded him specially, and they gave a big recognition for him and whoever placed first. Unfortunately, not everybody gets a scholarship opportunity, but this category did. Jason Tran did, and he's going to KU now, so he didn't accept a full ride, but it was a really nice, you know, on his part that he got that. And what FCCLA is, a lot of people might not understand what it is. It gets really, I mean, there's so much to it than just one thing. I mean, the book is 500 pages long. It's almost impossible to go through the whole thing with a few, you know, 20, 30 students. We basically kind of let the students look through the book. We kinda give them, like, if they're in my classes, I kinda steer them in the culinary direction, anything innovative, food innovation, anything food-related. And if they're in Ms. Sills' class, she kinda steers them in the direction of fashion, interior design. We also, if the kids wanna do anything, I mean, it's not just, I kinda get them career-ready. It kinda gets them, it gets them into like learning, getting to different projects. They don't have to just do like culinary stuff or fashion. Again, we have somebody did leadership. Katie did leadership. Another student did, you know, head of vacancies. So it's not just, I mean, there's so much, it's so big. It really kinda shapes them up to be more of a leader. They take on the role. We just help them and guide them, and if they have any questions, it's all the students' work. We're there to help them if they have any questions, give them the resources that they need. Basically, that's, it's student-led. We're only there to advise them if they need any help with anything. I mean, I can sit here for hours and discuss FCCLA, but it'll, it'll be, we'll be here forever. But yeah, and thank you so much for the support, the funding. It gets really expensive taking nine students to Anaheim, California. We also did more than just leadership things. We took them to Disneyland, too, so that was an experience for them. We did some leadership academies. They did that during that time. They competed. I mean, there was so much that they did during that time that, I mean, I think all of them came out really happy with the week that we were there, so, but thank you. Really do appreciate your guys' support and the parents, too, of the students that were in the group, so.
Question?
The, give us a sense of this, I mean, this is a big deal when you say national.
Yes.
When you take first in the nation, it's not like there's 100 firsts and 100 seconds. And then Kansas compared to other states, how was Kansas represented through you guys?
I mean, was... I think Kansas had, they said they had like five or six firsts in the nations this year, and they had like 116 that were in the top 10. So Kansas does very, very well on the national stage when it comes to FCCLA, because we're one of the few states that has not only a state preliminary competition, but also a district competition. So our kids, in order to get to nationals, they had to place first at the district competition and then first at second at state. So they had to not only beat out the people at the national competition, but the people here in our local state area, too.
And Kansas, I mean, Garden City versus the rest of Kansas, didn't we have, didn't you guys have like half the awards brought back to Kansas? Or was it anything like that?
I wouldn't say half the awards, but Kansas FCCLA is really, really big in comparison to other states. There's over 40 different competitive events. So, yeah, but we had a good childhood. Most of our nine students placed top five. I mean, that's just, I mean, they're great. That's something amazing that South Coast Kansas Garden City can bring home, so, which is great. They do amazing. The kids do amazing. If they need any help, they ask. I mean, I have no, I mean, it was great working with them. I'll miss Katie, since she's my senior, and I'll miss Jason, and I'll miss Brian and Victoria, our seniors, and Caitlin. But a new group of students will come in, and hopefully, well, next year, we'll, you know, hopefully, they'll be a good example of them to make a good effort to go to nationals again. And we have, not only Katie, but also Suparina Ramirez will be a district officer next year. So we have two out of the six from Garden City.
Great.
So what exactly would food innovations look like? What do you do for that?
So basically, we send out a survey to the entire school, or whatever your choice is, that you're gonna market this food product, and you do some background research on it, and you try to develop this product that your target age group will enjoy the most and make you, will sell the best. And then you develop this product, you put it through focus groups twice. You get feedback, you innovate, you change it to make it better.
There's three, there's three different levels you compete in. So there's junior you can compete in, or senior, or occupational. And so we were in the junior category, because we were freshmen. And so each level gets assigned a different food topic. So ours was, we had to find, create an indulgent appetizer. And then the older kids had...
I think senior category was dessert, and then occupational, what Ryan Blaze did, he, an indulgent salad.
Yeah, and then, like Audrey said, you have to find a way to cater to it, change it, make it better. And we had to create a whole display board. That was like two trinkets stacked on top of each other and present about it for 10 minutes and explain what all we did for the project.
To start their base on the project, they sent out a survey to the student body. And you guys got back 450 responses, I think.
Yeah.
And just to narrow it down, I think we were there for like three or four days, just to narrow down what the main thing their students around their age enjoys to eat as an appetizer. And then after that, they start developing what they, what they think their student body would enjoy.
We ended up making, sorry, we ended up making mini empanadas, by the way. Yeah, that was our food product, mini empanadas. And along with marketing it, you also have to figure out the price range for it. You have to develop a box for it, packaging, a nutrition label, instructions, all that stuff that's included in it. And it, like, you'd sell it in the store, basically, so we had to do all of that.
And I started delivering samples. That's awesome. And Katie, what was leadership about?
So leadership is you create a portfolio, and then at the actual competition, you give a 10-minute presentation that's memorized, and then the judges have 10 minutes to ask you any question that they want about your project. And so the base of leadership is you pick three develops that you wanna strengthen. So through FCCLA and through your other class works. And so one of them, for example, that I picked was, I wanted to be more outgoing. And I started this project way back in FCCLA. So like, some of the things I did was compete in impromptu speaking, where I work on my public speaking skills and things like that, and then running for state office. Those things that get me out of my comfort zone and out of my shell a little bit more. So then I take that, and then I turn it into a presentation, and I present that along with, you have to do like employability checklist. So how has FCCLA taught you problem-solving? How has just school itself taught you? And then how have your other extracurriculars taught you? To see what skills you need to work on. And I think it's a really great project to do before you go to college, because you kinda see those things, those areas that you wanna work on and develop before you have to go into the real world. And this way, you have more time, and you have the mentors to help you. You also have to get two other people. You have to get like a mentor, like some of your teachers. And then you have to get a friend, so I had Caitlin Harmon, since she was in student council with me. They have to write a reflection about you and see how you've changed through the project. And if it had like a lifelong impact, or if it was just something that you kinda just did to get an award.
Wow, that sounds incredible. Well, thank you guys so much for your hard work and your support of students. And we'd like to shake your hand and congratulate you.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations. Yes. Congratulations. Are you guys excited for your future career? Congratulations. Good luck.
Zachary Johnson, good luck.
Okay, so I think we're ready for question lines. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
President, I move that we approve the consent agenda as previously amended.
Do I have a second? Second? Okay, all those in paper, please say aye. All those opposed, nay? Great. We'll move on to discussion items, and start with the court of honor reports. The FPL support team. Hi.
Warming it up.
I thought I'd sneak up here in a few minutes.
I know, you really did. I was like...
There it is. There we go.
This year, we want to start a team, and I'll talk a little bit about the makeup of that team, to talk about social, emotional learning and behaviors, not just within the school, but within the community as well, and what we can do to help our students. So we want to take a look at the data that we know and the trends, and then come back to the superintendent's leadership team and propose either best practices or supports and things that we think we can do to help students and make the situation better for them. There are two organizations that I particularly look to when I do social, emotional data and learning. The first one is Castle. It's a collaborative for academic, social, and emotional learning. That's what that stands for. It was started in 1994. And essentially, it is a support for schools. So it will vet different projects that, or curriculum for social, emotional learning, and kinda give them a rating and what they are doing. So that is really something that I go to frequently for educators. The second one is Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. They are getting more and more involved into the world of children at schools and what schools can do to help. But they deal specifically, a lot of times, with the substance abuse and the mental health around that. Castle has demonstrated through their data and their programs that social, emotional learning has helped lead to improvements in academic achievement, graduation, attendance, and school climate. So in other words, if we are helping the students that have social, emotional problems, behaviors, recollections, if we can provide them with some support, we're going to see a better end product in their schoolwork. People that I am going to recommend be on the committee. We have both school people and community people, because again, we want to look at this through a community lens, because we can't do it by ourselves. None of us can. So I'm recommending myself, special ed director, athletic director, counselor, a member from the Board of Education, and then both an elementary and secondary principal and teacher from the school group. Then from the community, someone from the multidisciplinary task force, Compass, Livwell, perhaps somebody from the medical community, legal, and SRO, that can give an insight both to the community and to the schools, the school setting. Possible topics, and I put dueling up here. We've talked about this last year. But this is a perfect example of if we had a working community group to talk about something, it might have helped guide that end product with our board policy on dueling last year. So dueling, mental health supports in school, what does that look like for the school? What does it look like for, for example, the mental health pilot, where Compass is coming into our schools? And Compass actually has more than one program where they come in. It's not just the pilot program. So what does that look like, and how can we facilitate that? Drug testing for athletes, the self-harm protocol, and community resources. So with that, possible data points, the community care survey, Compass referrals, and these, a lot of these come from our counselors. So how many times do we call Compass and make a referral? That can go back to the self-harm protocol, but it's not always just self-harm. It could be a situation at home that we know that we need to get them some mental health support. The mental health pilot turns in a report twice a year to the state. That includes improved behavior, so referrals, detention, attendance, counselors passes, nurses passes, because students that aren't... because students that aren't feeling good about what's happening in their lives often look for escape and ways to get out of the classroom or they want to talk to the nurse or the counselor about what's going on. Graduation rate, contacts with law enforcement, uh SABR, which is our screener that the district uses, and again, our self harm protocol. This is from SAMSA, one of the agencies that I pointed out. I'm not going to read all through this, but I do have some of it bolded. Um an estimated ten percent of children and adolescents in the United States have a serious emotional disturbance. Yet approximately eighty percent of those children do not receive the appropriate services. And what they're asking for, I've got the websites on your PowerPoint, you can go in and read the entire article. This just came out July one of this this year. They're asking for schools to come in and and help make that connection for students and families and uplines. So this is extremely relevant, this is like just this month has come out. Timeline, I'd like to start working on membership and making contact with those people that I listed and getting them to to agree to serve on this committee. Like to have the first meeting in September, then we would meet quarterly unless the the topic required more time. So for example, with the juuling as an example, we would have probably spent two or three meetings trying to work up what that policy looked like and make a recommendation to the school district, um and then a yearly update to the board. Questions?
So is the committee mostly to develop policy or are you also going to look at what we can add to even everyday curriculum? Because sometimes I feel like social emotional health takes on the negative aspects of that, but we all need to learn. Social emotional health, so it seems like it's somewhat critical to have like an everyday type like integrated into our curriculum. So does that know if this group will also be involved in maybe something like that or?
Yes, exactly, because we do have another group that is looking at curriculum because at the end, by the end of this next school year, we have to have a social emotional curriculum in place at all levels and several of our schools are doing that. We have um Avid, for example, uh has a social emotional component. And so we have several things that are being tried this year um for that piece. So we'll kind of blend, that's why Josh and I are both on that because we're on both committees, so we can kind of blend that piece. But again, it is not just curriculum because one of the things that SAMSA is recommending is that we bring that community in and find those community supports, help our our families find those community supports.
What's the name of the other community?
Castle. And SAMSA.
I'm really excited to see who all you have on the community side because so often the right hand doesn't know what the left hand is doing. So I'm really excited to see that and that you included a multidisciplinary team.
Yes.
To that, um so thank you for doing that. In the other words, individuals you have as well, I think it's going to be a great committee and do some really good work with our kids.
So I'll be looking for a volunteer from the board.
I was gonna just fill in your names.
So we can add that. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Clinton. Next hole here from the Summer Math Academy and Literacy Summit.
All right, I'm Suzette Wilson Lewis and we're doing this presentation together, Crystal Steinmetz and Monica Diaz. We all work in the Office of Learning Services and we all work constantly together when we're providing PD, whether it's math or social studies or ELA or anything, so that's kind of why we're we're here together to present because we work together on on these summits. This summer, we were able to have a learning summit as well as a math summit. Our learning summit was uh three days and then our math summit was two and a half days. We were able to do these, the math summit, um through a grant that we had, we had a little bit of money left over. Where we've been able to do a a two week uh summit in the past with the money that we had left over. We were only able to do a two and a half day summit this year. Uh and then with the LINK grant, we were able to do the the three day summit. We wanted to do some summer summits because that allowed the teachers, more teachers to be able to come since they weren't in the classroom and sometimes we have trouble finding sets and that. So we um had more teacher attendance um in the summer, which is one of the reasons that we did it um in the summer. Some of the things that we chose uh for our math summit was uh we were just looking at best practices for teaching math, which went K twelve, uh and then as far as the the learning summit, which was um ELA ESL based. We had done several book studies as well as brought in some people for ESL strategies and that. So through the year, we worked on some of these strategies and then we were able to bring in some people for our summit that emphasized what we had been learning through the year. So.
Was that authors or book studies or?
Uh we were able to bring in some of the authors of some of the book studies that we did, yes. So Crystal, had them the math institute.
So I I'm just gonna talk about the, um we kind of, we called it a mini math institute because like Suzette said, in the past, the past three summers, we've done a project achieve institute with pre-K through um eighth grade teachers and it was a two week commitment. And then we were able to do a ma- uh high school mini math academy last year, that was two and a half days. So this year, instead of the two week commitment, um we were able to fund it um within the district and we did um two and a half, two and a half days. Um so these are the three presenters that we brought in. So Sherry Martini and Jenny Whitley have been um part of our academies or our math summer institutes the past three years. So this was the fourth year that they were able to come back, which was really nice because they were able to streamline um what we had done the last several years. Um and then last year, um Sherry was also involved in our, or both of them, I'm sorry. Sherry and Jenny were also involved in our high school academy. And then Julie, I'm gonna say her last name wrong, Katie Lee, um joined us this year um along with the other two and helped um with with the breakout sessions during the during the academy. So we had a total of forty-seven participants in that range, um teachers from all grade levels, so pre-K through twelve. We had sped teachers, interventionists and instructional coaches included in that in that forty-seven. And then within that forty-seven, I just broke it down between new attendees or ones that hadn't attended a math academy um in the past. And then seventeen returning attendees had at one point um attended one of the two week ones. So this was really exciting, we had a lot of people able to able to commit to two and a half days that normally couldn't commit to the two weeks because of, you know, childcare or other things. So um the amount of teachers we've had attend over the past four years has just grown and it's been really exciting to watch. Um these were the objectives that we worked on for the two and a half days. So they worked on understanding the difference between performance goals and learning goals. So when they set objectives and sat down and worked with kids, um they knew the difference between the two. Um we worked on picking high quality tasks. So when things were ch- um chosen to bring into the classroom or into instruction, looking at that, is that of high quality? Is it actually on grade level? There's a lot of stuff out there that's good and then there's a lot of stuff out there that's kind of weak that um as instructional leaders of our classroom need to be able to determine. And then what to do if it's not at the level that we needed, how can I be fed up? And we worked on recognizing and strengthening the aspects of our teaching practice that support productive struggle. So helping kids um work through a problem without jumping in to save them. But doing that productively, so if they are really struggling and they are not able to move forward, that we we provide them the support that they need. So so what does that look like in my classroom and how do I support that the most effectively? And then working on creating an environment that promotes math reasoning and problem solving. So challenging our kids and giving them the opportunity to work through um work through different problems. And this was just the structure of the day, the morning they really spent focused on content. And then book studies, since it was only two and a half days, a lot of those book studies were more based on articles. And then the afternoon, they focused on um pedagogical, was pedagogically focused and then they worked with their peers. So they worked um with peers at the same grade level and then across, um or I'm sorry, vertically. So um ele- elementary and they worked with some middle and some high school teachers. They did a lot of cross um grade level work as well.
Uh this was our first annual literacy institute and that was made possible by our LINK grant that we were awarded. So that took place May twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth and thirtieth. These were our presenters. We had one full day of unpacking the standards and that was provided by Southwestern Plains Regional Service Center. We had uh the following day, we had breakout sessions with um some keynote speakers. We had Val- Valentina Gonzalez, who was an ESL consultant. We had Olivia, who um worked with uh visible learning and literacy. Lots of teachers have been studying Hattie's research on effect size and um we were able to bring her in from to represent John Hattie and his work and the research done with um visible learning and literacy. Jimmy Casas is the author of Culturize and we did a full day with him on um culture, cultural awareness and sensitivity. William and Crusada Hemley are husband and wife and they've authored a book to- called Total Participation in the language classroom. And we were able to bring them in as some keynote speakers and then they did breakout sessions on student engagement. We had a hundred and five participants, we had teachers, sped um teachers, some interventionists, instructional coaches, pairs and administrators. And every participant received up to four resource books and I have some for you here that you can leave with. That was fun for the teachers to be able to leave with resource books. They can take those back and do book studies. Some of them already participated in some book studies but didn't have their own book. So they'll be able to have their own book now and I'll share those with you today as well. That's a fun reading. Our objectives for this summit were to familiarize teachers to the Kansas State ELA standards and how they tie to our new ELA curriculum, the textbooks we're getting this year. To provide ESL and cultural awareness techniques and strategies. To develop an understanding of effect size of student engagement, to learn best practices to support deeper student engagement. And instruction on visible learning for literacy and Hattie's research on effect size. And we just have, every day we had books that we handed out that was Culturize, Jimmy Casas' books. And then just some, th- those were the presenters for um for our summit. And um just some stuff, this is Jimmy Casas who had a day to himself.
Question, what is effect size?
I'll give you a book.
Okay.
So if anything, the research shows it's point four or higher, that means you get a year's worth of student growth. So he did research on all kinds of strategies that teachers use. And now teachers have an understanding whether that's a powerful strategy or a weak strategy. So Total Participation was a a person we brought in and that's student engagement. So if we look at Hattie's research, we see it's really high on the effect size. So we should have student engagement happening in classrooms because it might be worth a year and a half. It might reflect a year and a half worth of student growth if done effectively. We know, um let's see, for example, homework is always a hot topic in discussion. So we can look up what's the effect size on homework based on all of Hattie's research. And he did the research on the research just to make sure where we know what is going to be powerful uh strategies and instruction in classrooms. So the teachers left with one or two books, you can open them up, you can look for, I like doing, um let's see, let's see, I'm trying to think of something that they might like to do, cooperative learning. I'm gonna see if that's very, if that's worth my time and effort in the classroom to have my kids participate in cooperative learning and think pair share and all of that. And well, they'll they'll look it up and they'll see that's a huge effect size, so they'll know I really need to make a point to do that in my classroom because student growth is going to happen when that happens in the classroom. But maybe worksheets, that's pretty low or negative, so somebody that really likes to do worksheets might actually be able to see the research that supports, that's not um necessarily best practices in the classroom. And I'll let you, um, there's two books on that from Hattie. And then you'll see, um in many schools, there's this um chart that they'll have and you'll see where the effect size lies in in the different learning that happens when we're doing different strategies in classrooms.
It's a great conversation when you talk about the kids that come to you with, you know, deficiencies or or, you know, you know, things that are maybe stacked against them and looking at that, you can see that may affect them, but this has such a, you know, more powerful effect and I have control over this piece, you know, while they're in my classroom. So really encouraging when you look at how you can impact our students.
And we're just very excited uh that we were able to to provide these trainings this this summer. And um with the LINK grant, we'll be able to do two more years of the learning summit uh over the next two years. We felt like it was very successful, a lot of the feedback that we had uh was very positive. And so we're just looking forward to next year kind of continuing on. Like Valentina and and Olivia, we're planning on bringing back for a little year, so we'll be doing some continuing thing, ongoing PD with what we started last year. And then hoping that our summit next summer is even bigger than what we had this year, so. Any question?
I'd like to congratulate on you on the increase in the participation. You've helped partner this summer, have a double ceiling with your teachers. To get them to give a part of their summer is amazing to have.
Yeah, and I think I think that since we were being able to bring in some well-known speakers and and um then be able to continue it through the school year really helped that they were willing to to attend and get that.
Is this something that can also be like maybe condensed and used just for professional development for those student, for those teachers that weren't able to attend this summer? Or can they get in on this um study?
Yeah, the book studies are open to anybody, like a lot of the schools have them on their own or um like the Culturize, the high school did it, but like anybody in the district could join in and do the book study. So yeah, it's open to to everybody, not just those that went to the summit.
And some of the additional books that we had left over Suzette's gonna offer as prizes and um they'll be available to the new teachers coming in that weren't here over the the summit, uh when the summit was taking place.
So I was gonna say, what is visible learning, but you're gonna tell me it's in those books.
Yep.
Well, thank you very much, thanks for coming today.
Thank you.
Good thing I won't be here. Can I get like seventy-two or something like that?
For this trip, do they get resources in that training on, if they have a student that's particularly challenged and English is a second language? Does this cover any of that or is this just pretty much anybody that wants to to learn more about?
The presenters were really good about offering additional um resources. So any questions, they left their website and they have blogs that they, so I feel like they can research more strategies and have um those opportunities to do deeper as well. The resources are definitely available.
Can I get that one on visible learning?
Here, there's more, here's a.
Oh, it's that one.
Yes, you're good.
Thank you. Oh, I did have a question on math. We had some files left over, so we were able to do it this summer. And I heard some good feedback from a couple of attendees. Kind of liking the shorter time. It was early in the summer and they'd come right off the school year. But are we never be able to do that next year?
We haven't, we haven't ruled out the opportunity. It would all be with.
We still have the grant is the point.
Yeah, so we had the grant for two years and then Casey was actually able to add us for the third. So we thought we were going to have to self-fund us the third, but they could add us. So that's how, so we just saved that money and we're able to pay for this round. So I haven't talked with them. I mean, there are a lot asking for money, so I'll be in there talking about it again. So we'd like to continue, to continue it, especially since we're doing the ELA summit as well. So I think our teachers, I mean, several come back over and over and then some that can't commit, you know, to it this summer. We'd like to come back the next. So it's really beneficial. We get great feedback. They enjoy the time to collaborate when they're not so overwhelmed with the whirlwind of the school year. So it's really, it's amazing to see our teachers give up their time and just dedicate them to being better, so.
Thank you. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to unfinished business. Do we need to consider approval of the revised policy GAHB? Are we going to read over that or just?
Yeah, so unless you want to have additional discussion, I think we've talked about this topic several times. We brought back a draft in the last meeting. First, kind of a first read.
Right.
And also, this would have been on the percentage of the board members.
The board want to have any discussion or can we move to a vote? Well, I'll move to approve policy GAHB.
How we do it?
No, it's okay, but at least give you.
And also to get it on the table.
Okay. Yeah. Now do we wish to have discussion?
I need a second.
Oh, okay. So all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes today? Thank you. Approved as presented, policy GAHB. So we will move on to new business. I think the committee assignments for this next year are being passed around. So we can continue to do that. And we will move on to our presentation in a second. Quote, do not, one of the other forums was the board agenda meetings, but I didn't see one for next week for the August.
It's not, I'm with you.
Okay.
I'm out of town.
I'm out of town. So I'm just going to go ahead.
We can game plan that one.
I wasn't sure if it was intentional or. Don't give me that look. I'm recycling. I didn't have to buy any new books this year. No, I said, don't give me that look. I thought you were talking about the red book.
No.
Okay, so I just handed you your wonderful handy-dandy budget finders, which I know you've been anxiously waiting its arrival. Because you haven't had a chance to look at it, I'm just going to do a very high-level overview of kind of how we came out for this year in the proposed budget. And then we'll have a couple of weeks for you guys to review those in depth and then we can talk about it more at the next meeting. But just to kind of give you a quick summary of kind of all the things that I found as I went through and worked on the budget. Okay, so same thing as normal. We do this in a three-step process. We'll talk about an overview today. In a couple of weeks, we'll come back, answer any questions. And then I will ask for your permission to publish the budget. And then in the third meeting, we will have an open, a hearing on the budget and any comments from the public if there are any. And then hopefully you guys will vote to approve the budget. So that's kind of our process as we go through it. Things we're going to talk about tonight, the biggest pieces of the puzzle, general fund and the local option budget. The changes in that money and then what, what do we do with that money after we have it? What do we look for in our priorities? Enrollment obviously plays an important piece in the money that we're given. So does the assessed valuation. Those two things drive our mil levy and then our budget count line. So in the general fund, for next year, I am calculating that we are going to have about $55 million in our general fund budget. Last year, we had $52.7 million. That difference of 2.3 million is the same 2.3 million that we've kind of been talking about since we've known what the new school funding is going to be. We had anticipated this and nothing has really changed. So two major drivers are in this piece. One is the biggest piece of it is the base state aid per pupil. Last year, we worked with $4,165, I believe, and this year it's $4,436. So that's the biggest piece of why we have so much more money. What plays also a little bit of a factor in there is our enrollment. Our enrollment has actually gone down a little bit with this calculation of the budget. So that offsets a little bit, but it's pretty small in comparison to the additional base state aid per pupil. The local option budget, if we think of these in buckets, I should go back. The general fund is the money that we get from the state primarily. It does have some local dollars that kind of get funneled up and come back down. But for the most part, it's state money. The local option budget is the piece that we have the ability to generate local dollars. 2019, 20, 16.8 million. Look at that, that's pretty much what it was last year. I think if we look at actual dollars, it's less than $1,000 difference between last year and this year. And that's a calculation of taking a look at the general fund and we can apply a certain percentage to our local option budget. And again, that has a different base state aid per pupil. It did not go up near as much as the general fund did. But the off, the increase in the base state aid per pupil for the local option budget was almost completely offset by the decrease that we had in student enrollment, which is why we get to exactly the same place. So no change. Now that we know what dollars we have, we kind of look at and say, well, what are we going to do with those dollars? And these are the three budget priorities we've continued to work with over the last couple of years. Obviously, we want to make investments in our staff. We want to attract and retain good quality employees to work with our students. Evidence and research-based programming, so what can we spend our money on that's actually going to have an impact with our students? And then third, do we have an opportunity to reduce local property taxes? And this is one of the things that a couple of weeks ago, in one of our last meetings, I talked about. It's great that we have all this new funding, but we're not quite back to where we would have liked to have been if you compare it to dollars prior to the court case. So if we had all of that money back, we could probably hit all three of these. But because we came close, but not all the way, I believe in this budget, we're going to be able to hit one and two, but we won't quite hit number three yet. If we look at enrollment, I kind of pared this down. In the past, we had a long list of what our enrollment was. But back in 2017, it changed a little bit on how we calculated what our student enrollment is because kindergarten is now counted as a whole person instead of half a person. So I think it's easier to just look at the numbers that make sense in comparison. Plus, it makes sense now when we look at, our budget is now based on the greater of the prior two years. So the school year we just ended, we got to use the greater of 2016 or 17. So we obviously used the 7,300 students. The budget year that we are currently in and that is currently on your table was the difference between 2017 and 2018, which obviously the greater of those two had a decrease from the prior year of 150 students. So you can kind of see what's going to happen for next year. If we lose enrollment again next year, we will see another drop in potential funding the following year. If it goes up, we might be able to offset the deficit that we saw in 2018. So it's just a constant two-year rolling cycle. Assessed valuation. This year, we had an interesting anomaly, so to speak. Our real property values went up considerably. However, there was some state value properties that saw a significant decrease. The net-net effect of those two is our assessed valuation went down half a million dollars. The reason that's important is because if we go back to our local option budget, which we said we can generate 16.8 million dollars, but now I have a lower assessed valuation to do it with. So in order to generate the exact same dollars as we did last year, I have to have a higher multiplier, which is the mil levy. So that's kind of what we'll see here in another, actually I think it's the next slide. So this is the summary of our mil levy over the last, I don't know, eight or so years. There's really only a couple of pieces that kind of have a play factor anymore. The general fund is constant at 20 mils. That's the 20 mils that is generated locally, goes up to the state and comes back down through the general fund. So the state can say they gave us money, but really it came locally. The LOB is the money that we're just now talking about, that 16.8 million dollars. Capital outlay, we, by statute, can go no higher than 8%. We are at, or excuse me, 8 mils. We're at 8 mils right now. And the bond and interest fluctuates with the needs that we have in the bond and interest fund. So if we look back a few years, we can tell that we were up in the 49, 49, 50. Got as high as 52 in 15, 16. For the last three years, we've been able to stay flat at 48.8. And I believe that we can stay at 48.8 as well this year, even with the assessed valuation changes in our decrease in enrollment. The main reason we can do that has to do with bond and interest. You can tell in this fund, we dropped 2.2 mils, but those 2.2 mils went right up to the LOB. The reason that we have lower needs in bond and interest this year, we'll go back, 2015, 2016, we had all that fund when we refinanced our bonds. And what that allowed us to do was kind of retire some old bonds and put off some payments for a while. We kind of hit a little bottom lull here where we have some lower payments before we start going back up. So this year, when we look at the bond and interest fund, I have to calculate an 18-month reserve because we have to be able to last 18 months in that fund. So last 18 months versus this 18 months, we need a million dollars less than we did last year. We'll have one more year of that where bond and interest fund can probably stay low and then it's going to go back up. But it's nice this year because it offsets our LOB needs. So I think we'll end up being in the same place at the 48.8.
This really raises some questions about next year.
Yes. My hope is that we will have, if we can have a good increase here for assessed valuation, then we might be able to get to that point where we could hit number three of our budget priorities and actually have some property tax relief because hopefully then we'll have enough dollars generated with the mils we're already generating to cover what we can need. Because as we think about our budget, we don't get to just charge mils and keep going up. We have a cap. We can only generate so many dollars. And when the mil levy hits that amount of dollars in the fund, you're done. You can't, can't go tax anymore. So then that in effect gives us the property tax relief. So that's what I'm hoping for, but time will tell. So we kind of run through most of these, or some of these. The mil levy, positive impact factors, the decrease in the bond and interest payments that we talked about. One other thing that happened in the bond and interest is the state aid. We get state aid based on the assessed valuation per pupil. So if you take our assessed valuation divided by our student count, then you get an assessed valuation per pupil. The lower that amount is statewide, the more state aid we get. So last year in bond and interest fund, we received 53% state aid. So if we needed a million dollars in bond and interest, the state paid 53% of that and our local taxpayers paid the rest. This year, we're at 57% in bond and interest. So it's kind of a double nicety to us this year. Not only do we need lower payments, but the state's going to pay more of that bucket that we need, which allowed those mils to go over to the other fund. And then the negative impact was obviously the assessed valuation. So just to kind of put dollars to that a little bit more. Last year, one mil would have generated $370,000. This year, one mil will generate $345,000. So again, same, same one mil, but it, what it brings in is different. So that's kind of again how that assessed valuation kind of plays in that, in that fluctuation. So this is obviously meeting one. You're going to go home, you're going to read your books, you're going to look at all those pages that I spent a really long time putting together. And you're going to want to have tons of questions about every number that's in that book. And next meeting on August 5th, we can talk about it and you're going to hopefully give us approval to publish it. It'll be in the paper and then on August 19th, we'll have our meeting on it and have a public hearing.
Can you give prizes for the most questions? You said hopefully tons of questions.
Tons of questions. Well, at least then I know that you looked at your book. I worked really hard on it. It's a giant puzzle.
I have a question. If I was following this right, so when you divide your enrollment, as you were describing just now, as enrollment goes down, does that hurt you in what the state will cover on bond and interest?
Sure, because your assessed valuation per pupil isn't going to go up. Absolutely. But with only 156 decrease with 7,000-plus students, that factor was minimal.
And Mark, you also, that number that is ranked with everybody else in the state, so it depends on where everybody else moves in that. So you're correct. You would think that that would have a negative effect on us, but if others had a bigger increase, if we moved closer to the bottom of that list, then our state aid fills out. So it's not just based on what happens here, what happens in other districts also has a different effect on that.
Thank you. Can you explain to me the difference between real property valuation and state assessed property valuation?
No. I don't know the answer to that, other than that was the response I got back from the county clerk when I asked why it went down because I was not expecting to see that. But I can get some more information on that for you.
Yeah, I'm just curious.
May I have a question? Thank you, KJ.
President, can I throw one other thing at you? So KJ encouraged you to come up with all those questions. I would encourage you, please get us those questions if you can before the meeting next time so we can make sure that we come prepared with the correct answers to those because the timeframe is kind of tight here with this process to get the budget published and then have that hearing. So yeah, I think it'll help us all if you, as you come up with those questions, send them to me and I'll get up to KJ. That way we'll get you the best answers.
I have one other quick question sort of off to the side, but we're still holding our own on food services paying its way?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. With that, we are at board open discussion. Mark, would you like to start?
Sure. Since Tim's not here. And I don't, I don't really have anything at this time.
I don't have anything, but I am really excited for the next school year. So I think it's great when I started the band camp today. So once they do that, it's kind of already going.
All right, I don't have anything, thank you.
How are you thinking?
I think Cindy told me there's 20 days or something that she started the countdown. She gets to go to high school next year, so she's really excited for school to start, so.
Are you having as much problem with that as I am?
Like mentally?
Yeah.
Emotionally, yeah. I did some of that social. And she's been driving me around all summer, so that's pretty terrifying, so.
Don't talk to her. Don't talk, Mark. Okay.
I throw something.
Yes, I'm sorry.
So I, I got so excited at our recognitions, I forgot, we have another one that wasn't on the agenda, but we want to recognize Mark Root for his work as president of the board in the 18, 19 school years. So, Mark, thank you, thanks for all your work.
My pleasure.
Put that on your wall somewhere.
Thank you for tolerating that.
Okay, so the next board meeting, the Board of Education will take place on Monday, August 5th, 2019, at 16:00 in the board meeting room at the Educational Support Center, along by the Leighton Street Department of Education. We will now move to executive session.
I'm, uh, President, I need to update this. Just so you know. Here, Mr. Trump.
Oh.
I move we go into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss teacher negotiations and class-wide meeting for, for the 19, 20 school year pursuant to the exception of the employer-employee negotiations under coma beginning at, should I just say 7:15?
Sure.
And the open meeting will resume in the board meeting room at 7:35. I would like to invite Dr. Carlin, Keith Hogan, and KJ Knowlton into session. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Call on paper. Hey, hi. I'm, okay. See you in four minutes.